Is Pam at home? Okay. So I got clarification from Chair Jim Bernard. Brad? I got clarification from Chair Jim Bernard. Clackamas County was sending the OAT. What do you think, Kevin?
You can go ahead and get started, and I will try and connect with Commissioner Teresa.
Okay. Hello, everyone. We are back to the Board of Commissioners' work session for September 8th, 2020. We are now on Agenda Item Number Four. Ordinance Number 868, Tektronix Development Agreement. So we'll start off with a staff report. We have Stephen Roberts to kick us off, and then he'll turn it over to his various staff members.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Our first topic today is, as you said, ordinance 868. This is a renewal, proposed renewal of the Tektronix Development Agreement. And this is a proposed seven-year extension of the agreement. Just by way of context, this is the only development agreement that we have in Washington County, so it is fairly unique. Suzanne Savin on our team is going to walk you through a briefing, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And we're just preparing today for the first public hearing on this ordinance that happens a week from today. So with that, Suzanne?
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to be going through a quick presentation on this ordinance. And with me will be Steve Kelly, Senior Planner with Transportation, in case there are any questions about the transportation improvements component of the development agreement. Next slide, please. So just to orient everyone, this is the location of the Tektronix campus. It's north of the Milliken Way Light Rail Station, and it's bordered on its north edge by Jenkins Road and on its west edge by Murray Boulevard. Next slide, please. So before I go into the specifics on the updates to the development agreement, I'm just going to step back with a little bit of context about why the development agreement. The agreement was first initiated back in 1998, and it provides certainty for both the county and Tektronix about what each party will do and what types of improvements will be made in conjunction with future development of the campus. There is some state law Oregon-ervised statute 94, which is real property development, that provides for development agreements and limits their maximum duration with counties to seven years. And that ORS also requires development agreements to be both adopted and amended through an ordinance. Next slide, please. So as an overview for the content of the ordinance, it updates the development agreement to amend the right-of-way requirements for consistency with the county's current road standards. It adds Beaverton Creek Trail to the list of street improvement projects in the development agreement. It updates the campus building square footage inventory of the agreement. It clarifies that development standards in effect in 1998 remain applicable to the campus, and it extends the term of the agreement for seven years from the effective date of the ordinance. Next slide, please. So this is a map that shows that the campus is comprised of two lots and three tracts, all of which are located north of the Milliken Way Light Rail Station and bordered on the north edge by Jenkins Road and west edge by Murray Boulevard. Next slide, please. So as background, the development agreement was originally established in 1998 for several reasons. One was to facilitate the subdivision and development of the Tektronix campus. Another reason was to provide certainty about permitted uses, allowed building heights for campus development, and allowed densities, and provide certainty for the timely completion of transportation improvements, as well as establishing responsibilities for when those improvements would occur in connection with the campus development. Next slide, please. So the Tektronix campus has an industrial district land use designation. And in the industrial district, allowed uses include things like manufacturing, processing, and wholesale commercial uses. The development agreement also grants uses allowed by the transit-oriented employment district on the Tektronic campus. And uses allowed in that district include things like professional offices, research and development, and service and retail businesses. Next slide, please. So since the initial adoption of the agreement in 1998, there have been some updates and extensions over the years. The first occurred in 2005. And in that year, the agreement was extended for seven years. And it was also updated to identify which of the required transportation improvements remained to be completed at that time. In 2012, it was, the agreement was extended for an additional seven years. And it was also updated to amend the requirements for specific transportation improvements and to amend the total building square footage to reflect both additions and reductions that had occurred since the development agreement's 1998 effective date. And then last year, in 2019, the development agreement was extended for a year until November 30th of 2020. And at that time, the board directed staff to coordinate an update of the agreement. And so in February of this year, Long Range Planning received a request from Tektronix to update the development agreement and extend for an additional seven years. And the board approved inclusion of that request in this year's work program.
Could you, could we pause just for a second? You can see that Commissioner Teresa has lost power, having difficulty. Could we cue her up on the telephone so she could at least listen to the dialogue? She can't get YouTube. She doesn't have Internet.
Yes, Commissioner Willie, we are working on trying to get her in.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Oh, no problem. So next slide, please. So the substantive amendments in the updates to the development agreement in ordinance 868 are that changes to Section Six and Exhibit C of the agreement are being made to reflect updated transportation system plan and right-of-way requirements. Exhibit D of the agreement is being updated to update the inventory of existing buildings and building square footage. Section Three of the agreement is being amended to clarify that the development standards in effect in 1998 that relate to uses and building massing in areas generally will remain applicable to the Tektronic campus. And then the term of the agreement would be extended for seven years. Next slide, please. So that's the sort of high-level overview of the ordinance. And staff would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one. Refresh my memory. Why did they even need a development application? Private property. They could simply say, "We'll develop when we want to develop" and do it with the standards of today. What's in it for them, in other words?
I'll take a first cut at it, and then staff can feel free to jump in. So we think that it does add some value to the property for the owners. It's a large site. Lot one's over 120 acres, contiguous property. It provides the additional uses, both industrial and the transit-oriented employment, so that creates an expanded list of uses. It does have some exceptions, if you will, to the standard industrial regulations relative to building height. It allows some increased building heights. It provides a level of certainty for them relative to the amount of development and the types of development that are permitted on the site, as well as the conditions of, transportation improvement conditions that would be required in order to implement that development. So it's sort of locked in some certainty for them, the owner, at that point.
And just to follow up. If they said, if they said, "That's great, but I'll just go with whatever the standards are today," would they not be able to apply for variances and achieve somewhat the same? I'm trying to understand completely what's in it for them.
Right. So a property owner certainly could walk in and develop under the current regulations. If they wanted to amend the current regulations, there were processes for that as well. So they could go through essentially a plan amendment-type process if they were interested in changing the designation of the property or if they wanted to even create something more like a plan development with a customized mix of uses and development regulations. There are processes for that as well.
Commissioner Teresa, are you there? We're going to pause for a moment.
Hello, this is Pam.
Hello, Commissioner Teresa. I realize that you do not have, you, we're at the point where we've run through the presentation.
Okay.
The only, there wasn't anything said during the presentation that isn't in the slides.
Okay.
Commissioner Rogers just asked the question, "What's in it for them?" And Mr. Roberts summarized that, under the agreement, they can develop following the industrial requirements and regulations, as well as transit-oriented development employment for expanded use. There are also increased building heights, and they could also increase the amount of development under this agreement. Commissioner Rogers then asked the question of, if they wanted to, could they choose to develop under the current development requirements? And the answer is yes. But if they want to do something different than that, they would need to follow the plan amendment process for any changes.
Okay.
And Mr. Roberts is shaking his head affirmatively, so I guess I did a decent enough job of summarizing the answer.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any particular questions you may have?
No. But the problem for me, just so that you know, is that I can't even access the slides because I don't have Internet. So I read them, but I can't refer back.
So you did not download them to your device before the meeting?
No. No, I, you know, I, nope.
Okay. All right. Any other commissioners with questions? Seeing none, oh, go ahead.
Let me ask, let me ask just a couple of que, we've had, we've obviously had conversations with Tektronic representations. I look at the substanti, substantive amendments. Are they okay with those?
Yes. The agreement, as it's codified in the draft ordinance, is what we've negotiated with Tektronix to this point.
Okay. And we have made, I see some right-of-way. I know that Jenkins, I think I read in the information, Jenkins is going to go to a five lane. Is that, is that information?
Right.
And so pretty significant transportation right-of-way things that they've given us. So I guess I'm, I'm okay with that. And as far as your question, Commissioner Rogers, I think certainly is, certainty is an important aspect of this because it's almost like, well, we're going to buy this property and keep our fingers crossed. I mean, the annexation prohibition from the Nike legislation, they, they go to 2035 before they can force annexation, I guess, at least. But they can certainly request annexation prior before that. So I think there's plenty of flexibility and opportunity in this, and I, I don't see a problem with this. And certainly recommend that we would extend this for an additional seven years.
As a follow-up question I have, are we aware of any immediate or near-future plans that Tektronic has with respect to development, redevelopment of the?
We're not aware of any at this point, no, sir.
What's that?
We're not aware of any specific plans, no, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Seeing none, I've got a couple of questions. So this agreement talks about how they would, the development standards in effect in 1999 would remain applicable to the campus. Could you summarize what the applicable differences might be to the current code versus the 1998 code?
Suzanne, do you want to take that?
Yeah, sure. So there's actually, I think there's a, there's a slide that might have a little more information about that. A couple of slides after this questions or comments slide. So it would, and it starts by saying development standards at the top. So I think it's right after, next one, that one. Yes, thank you. So just to give a little bit of background, there is some language that is already present in the current agreement that's in the recital section that talks about the campus having the right to vest the right for them to develop in accordance with certain 1998 development standards related to uses and building massing in areas. And as part of this agreement update, that language was taken out of the recitals, and it was placed into Section Three of the agreement about permitted uses for clarity. So that's the, that's the, the language that Chair Harrington is referring to. It's basically existing language that's continuing to be in the agreement, but it's been placed in a new location in the agreement. And it basically gives, gives Tektronix some certainty that the uses that, that the development agreement allows, both the industrial uses and the transit-oriented employment uses, continue to be available to the campus.
And I would just add, I think, to be specific, it, it does not exempt them from, let's say, changes in significant natural resource or floodplain regulations. Things, other, other provisions of the code that have been modified over time would be applicable. So the, the agreement calls out some specific code sections that are essentially vested as of 1998. And again, those are primarily around the permitted uses and some of the intensity or the types of uses that are permitted.
So could we go back over that? Because that was lost on me previously.
Okay.
So the way that I had understood it is that they would be able to develop per the development code as it stood in 1998. And what, if I understood you correctly, you're saying that there are provisions in the current development code that would still hold, but that there are particular sections from the 1998 development code that are called out in the agreement that would continue to apply? So rather than it, in one case, the case that I thought it was is here's the 1998 code. They would develop this way. What I think you're describing is, here's the current code, but there are some very specific applicable sections where the 1998 code would apply.
That's correct, yeah. And Suzanne or Teresa, feel free to jump in and clarify that further, if you want to.
Sure. I'll just, I'll just clarify that a little further by noting that in the ordinance itself, if you look at Section Three of the development agreement, and it's on page three of the Exhibit One of the ordinance, so.
Was that provided in our packet?
I'm assuming that you've gotten a copy of the filed ordinance?
Yes, but do we have a link in our packet?
Yep.
Because I didn't bring.
I don't believe that we do have a link in there. I apologize for that.
Brad, do you have a copy of it with you?
I can also read it, too, just so you.
I have a hard copy, if you'd like to.
Yeah. Could I look at that real quick? For future reference, just if we would link in the, at least the work session topic sheet to the ordinance and the staff report, that would be helpful.
That's a great idea.
So Stephen has lent me his hard copy of, of the ordinance and the exhibit. How would you like to direct me?
Sure. So Chair Harrington, if you go to Exhibit One, and it's page three of Exhibit One.
Yep.
And then under Section Three on that page, permitted uses and vested code.
Yep.
The relevant subsection is 3.1. So it says, "For purposes of the vesting protection granted by this agreement, the applicable law shall be Sections 201, 320, 381, 404, 431, 605, and certain other sections of Article Four." So I'm going to pause on that for a second because Section 201, I think, is procedures. And then Section 38, 320 is induc, is the industrial land use district. Section 381 is the interim light rail overlay district. Section 404 is master plan. Section 431 is the transit-oriented districts. And Section 605 is land divisions. So these are the specific subsections that the Tektronix is become, is vested to the 1998 versions of these. And, and it, these all relate to, mainly to uses. Section 320, industrial district, you know, will point back to the industrial, industrial uses that were allowed in 1998. And I actually suspect that they haven't really changed over the years. So I, I don't know this for sure, but I'm thinking if you put a, the industrial district that now exists next to the 1998 industrial district, there's probably not too much difference. Section 381, interim light rail overlay district, the tech campus is also subject to that section of the code. And that, too, has not changed much over the years. Section 404, master plan, back in, shortly after the 1998 agreement was, was approved by the board, Tektronix submitted a master plan application to current planning. And so that's why Section 404 is being identified in the development agreement, because it's about master planning. And then Section 431, transit-oriented districts. You might recall, a few minutes ago, I said that the development agreement allows tech to have the uses in both the industrial district and the transit-oriented employment district. And so 431 is kind of like the reference to that. And then lastly, 605, land divisions. Back in 1998, the Tektronix campus had a different lot configuration than it does now. And so back at the time the development agreement was initially negotiated, one of the things Tektronix wanted to do and subsequently got approval to do was subdivide their lots into, you know, smaller lots. And so these specific sections of the code are the ones where they have the 1998 vesting. And as Stephen Roberts indicated, if they wanted to do something that had to do with another different code section, like if they wanted to make some modifications near Beaverton Creek where it runs through the campus, and that's a significant natural resource, they'd be subject to the current requirements in the code for Section 422, significant natural resources. As, as an example.
So one of the other areas that I am wondering about with regard to this question is we've learned an awful lot since 1998 about earthquakes and our vulnerability here. And state building codes have changed and whatnot. And that's why I was really trying to make sure I understood what this 1998, for lack of a better word, enabling language has so that improvements since then can, can carry forward. And it sounds like, what I'm hearing today is that there are different portions of the development code that handle situations like that that would apply.
Correct, yeah.
Which goes a long way.
Yes. And I would say, too, the building code is really a separate thing. And as it gets updated, then all new construction or significant re-alterations would be subject to the latest building codes as those happen.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, yeah. And that's, that's a good point, too. I think that's an important clarification that we probably could have done a better job of kind of calling out earlier in the process.
Okay. Yeah. This discussion has helped me a lot. And my second question, I don't even need to bother asking as a result. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. From that discussion, are there any other comments that have, or questions from commissioners that have come up?
And just to make sure I understood, you're saying that irregardless of the 1998 requirements and so forth, they're not pertinent or relevant to the issue of building code changes over time?
That's correct.
To the uniform, building code, safety issues, and things related that way?
That's correct. Right. Right.
If you had to summarize, maybe last question. If you had to, again, to summarize, what would be the biggest changes with respect to whether, let's say, with stationary development, this kind of thing? Are there, are there issues with respect to density or issues related to parking? What are some of the very specific things that have changed between 1998 and today, if any?
Do you want me to take that, Stephen?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. I'm struggling a little bit to try to think of some specifics, but if you have, I'm ready to go, go for it.
Sure. I just would note that the Tektronic campus is the only site left in Washington County that still has the interim light rail overlay district applied to it. There were sites, you know, back in the mid-'90s, several other sites that had that interim light rail overlay district applied to them. But over time, those other sites have been redesignated as transit-oriented districts. So they've had TO district land use designations applied. And when that happened, they had their interim light rail overlay district removed. So the tech campus is the only site left that still has the interim light rail overlay district on it and does not actually have a transit-oriented district land use designation. So that's, that's a difference. And the transit-oriented districts do have requirements, like sort of urban form requirements for placing buildings within certain relationships to streets and, and certain other sort of design requirements that are different than, than, than other districts in the county.
And I would characterize, I think, that interim standard, Section 381, was sort of the prototype, if you will, for the transit-oriented regulations that were adopted later. And I, one thing I was just going to add, too, is that, just for reference, the Nike campus, the unincorporated portions are also zone transit-oriented employment. So in terms of uses permitted, those, those same uses would be applicable to the Tektronics, Tektronix campus in addition to the, the normal industrial uses. And in some ways, I think the development standards would be somewhat similar, given the applicability of the interim light rail overlay.
I guess, I don't have any idea of the contrast between an interim overview light rail district versus a TOD. But for me, is there anything that would impact development in a negative fashion that we would allow in this?
I, I don't see any.
Okay.
Last call for you, Commissioner Teresa. Any other questions?
No, but thank you for the discussion.
Great.
All right. So we'll be back with our first public hearing next week. And, and I, yeah. Suzanne covered it. The planning commission recommendation has come forward on this one.
All right. We'll move on to the next topic, then, which is ordinance number 869, significant natural resources.
Okay. I think on this one, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Michelle Miller, who's going to give us the staff report. And again, Teresa and Andy Back and myself are all available to answer questions.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, I'm Michelle Miller, Senior Planner and Long Range Planning. I'm here to talk to you today about ordinance number 869, the amendments to significant natural resource regulations. Next slide. Today's presentation will include, for context, we'll briefly go over statewide planning goal five and the county's inventory and planning process to comply with this goal and background on changes to state law.
Well, Michelle, we lost you entirely. Okay, so what do we do now?
So Teresa, do you think you can jump in and take over for now?
Yeah, let me get the presentation here.
Hello?
Michelle, is that you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My internet connection is unstable, unstable, sorry about that.
So if you can just...
We're having a lot of wind over here. I live kind of over by Commissioner Therese, so maybe that was part of the problem.
So it might be wise for us to just have your audio, if you turn your video off?
Okay.
Thanks. So we're on the presentation overview slide.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm going to talk about the Significant Natural Resource Program Review and Assessment, talk about the enforcement order, and then we're going to dive into the proposed changes to our resource regulations and discuss the comments we've been receiving and go over our planning commission discussion. Finally, a timeline of our next steps. Next. So statewide planning goal covers over a dozen different types of resources, ranging from wildlife habitat and open space to historic and cultural and mineral and aggregate resources. Under state rules that implement Goal 5, a local jurisdiction develops its Goal 5 program by following a process. A jurisdiction conducts an inventory and assesses the local natural resources considered important to the community. It then reviews land uses allowed on or near each resource site that could negatively impact the natural resources and decides on an appropriate level of protection. Finally, the jurisdiction adopts regulations that reflect the policy decisions made for that particular resource. The county completed its initial inventory and process in 1983 and again in 2005 with the Twelton Basin Program. Now we are revising our adopted regulations consistent with our existing policy decisions. Next. The resources the county determined were significant through the Goal 5 process are identified on the various community plans in the urban area. These include water and habitat related resources. Next. In 2005, the county coordinated with cities in the county, Clean Water Services, Twelton Hills Park and Rec, and Metro to adopt the Twelton Basin Program, which was incorporated into Metro's functional plan under Title 13, Nature in the Neighborhoods. State Department of Land Conservation and Development acknowledged Title 13, serving as compliance with Goal 5 for all jurisdictions in the metro region. Title 13 provides that most of the habitat protection should apply to areas immediately adjacent to our stream banks where the highest resources are located and agreed that Clean Water Service requirements provided adequate protection for protecting water quality and riparian habitat and required local jurisdictions to develop policies and rules that encourage habitat-friendly development practices for fish and wildlife habitat. In 2006, the county amended our comprehensive plan to implement the basin program by adding policies and processes that reflected this decision. Next. State law changed in 2017 through Senate Bill 1051. It was a housing-related bill that addressed barriers to residential land development. One change reflected that all housing is needed housing so that all related regulations for residential development must only apply clear and objective standards. The change applied to land, not just buildable land. In 2018, our county hearing officer approved a six-lot subdivision with identified significant natural resources located in the Metzger Progress Community Plan area known as Crestline. The hearing officer determined that the recent changes in state law required that the county could only apply clear and objective standards to all residential land use development applications within the urban growth boundary, not to land considered buildable. He determined that three criteria in the Community Development Code, Significant Natural Resource Regulations, did not include clear and objective standards and were subjective, and approved the application. Nearby neighbors appealed the hearing officer's decision and the Lubbock Land Use Board of Appeals and the Court of Appeals agreed with them. Next. As the issues and community concerns continued and the Warren case was appealed, the board directed staff as a work program task to evaluate our Goal 5 program and provide recommendations to improve the development review process and advise on the federal, state, and local Goal 5 requirements. Staff initiated research, met with citizen participation organizations several times on the issue, culminating in our draft Significant Natural Resource Program Review and Assessment in the fall of 2019. The report described the history of the county's Goal 5 planning program as it relates to natural resources, concerns and issues about protection, common themes and findings. The final report issued in May of 2020 included a public engagement report, options, staff recommendations, and board direction on the recommendations. Next. Over this past winter, a petition was filed with LCDC requesting that they require the county to take corrective action to amend the provisions that were not clear and objective as they related to our Significant Natural Resource Section and not allow approvals of residential development applications on lands with significant natural resources until clear and objective standards were adopted. LCDC determined that the county was out of compliance with Goal 5 and established a deadline of May 1 of next year to address these standards. LCDC also agreed with the petitioner that an injunction on new development applications affecting lands with wildlife habitat was warranted. The enforcement order was issued in June and is in effect until the CDC is amended to address the standards deemed subjective. Next. So that brings you up to date on the related issues of this ordinance. And the primary objectives are to maintain our current Goal 5 policy direction from the comprehensive plan in Twelton Basin Program, address the LCDC enforcement order by developing clear and objective code language in our Significant Natural Resource provisions, and provide clarity and transparency in our regulatory requirements. Next. Several changes are proposed to clarify what was already required and improve the process by standardizing the information necessary to review a development application when a site contains a natural resource. Applicants had relied on a 98 Director's Interpretation, but it had not been incorporated into the code. So we're codifying some of the provisions of the submittal requirements to include field verification process to identify the limits of a resource on the site, tree inventory, a habitat assessment for fish and wildlife habitat and upland wildlife habitat, describing the condition within the field verified areas, certain limits, and requirement supply. For water-related resource areas, we're clarifying that the existing listed land use activities that are allowed. Next. For upland wildlife habitat, we're modifying the current subjective mitigation criteria for habitat to include a certain area of habitat preservation on a development site. It's 25% of field verified habitat area anywhere on the site or 15% of the area if it's adjacent to a riparian or Clean Water Services vegetated corridor, acting as an incentive to encourage greater protection of this sensitive area. So those preservation areas must be enhanced to good condition and permanently preserved in attract or easement. An incentive is offered to preserve upland wildlife habitat through the planned development process as an alternative. Next. In summary, we're looking to clarify the land use submittal process with minor changes to our categories and codifying the field verification and submittal requirements. We keep the existing narrow, limited, allowed uses and activities in the water-related habitat areas. We're quantifying the preservation requirements for habitat to replace the existing subjective language. We're adding a voluntary option to balance that objective criteria. And there's minimal changes to our rural S and R standards. Next. So far, there's been a lot of interest in this ordinance and we've received some very valuable feedback and testimony. There's a wide range of comments with some requests for specific changes that include protecting 100% of the resource areas rather than a certain percentage of habitat preservation. Some people addressed other subjective provisions or wording. There were requests to make the replanting requirements in the preservation areas more clear. Some think an objective reviewer is needed for habitat assessments. And there were other technical questions or minor changes requested. Next. Many concerns raised are outside the scope of this ordinance, however. They address broader policy questions that go beyond what the board had asked us to address in this ordinance. Some were asking for a continuance until these changes could be addressed. Staff suggests that these listed items not be included as part of this ordinance development, but should be considered and evaluated as part of next year's long-range work program. Next slide. So the planning commission has held two hearings with significant discussion, including a possible work program task for next year. They have an interest in reviewing the staff's proposed changes prior to making a recommendation. And we have a hearing scheduled for September 16 for further discussion. Next. So we will be asking for an engrossment of this ordinance. Our first board hearing is scheduled next week, with the planning commission's next hearing scheduled the following day. The second board hearing will be on the 29th of this month to ask the board to direct the engrossment. And if approved, those hearings will be scheduled for October 20th and the 27th. And with that, I'd ask for your questions or comments.
And actually, Michelle, if we could go back to the last slide. So just to be really clear with the board, this ordinance is quite unusual. It's a bit more complicated than a lot of our ordinances. And our timeframe, because of the enforcement order, has been shorter than we often have to work through some of the concerns with the ordinance.
Which enforcement order, could you clarify?
Sorry, so we do have an enforcement order from the Land Conservation and Development Commission on our Goal 5 process. They found that the fact that we had those three provisions in our code that weren't clear and objective, that that, they concluded meant that we were out of compliance with Goal 5. And so they issued an enforcement order asking us to address that. And they also put an injunction on the county for any new applications that had wildlife habitat on it, that at this point, we aren't taking any applications that have wildlife habitat that may be affected. And so that is in place until this ordinance would be adopted. And so that's part of the interest in moving this forward during this ordinance season. The commission did give the county until May 1 of next year. But our sense was that there was interest in trying to move this forward this year so that we could meet the requirements and the injunction could be lifted. So given that and given how complicated it is, there is this overlap between the planning commission hearings and the board hearing. So the first board hearing, our thought was that we would go a little more into depth about the ordinance and the process to date. There'll be a staff report that comes out today, so the board will have additional information to be able to provide that background for the discussion next week. And we have received a lot of public testimony, so we are assuming that there will be a lot of testimony on the 15th. And then staff would recommend at that point that the board continue the hearing to September 29. And that would give time for the planning commission the following day to consider the potential changes that staff will be proposing and for there to be additional public input. And then the planning commission would be able to make their recommendation to the board that then we could bring forward to you for your second hearing on the 29th. So there's more overlap than we normally have, but that was to give more time at the planning commission to sort through the variety of topics and issues.
And I would just add on to that, too, that the 29th really is sort of a key day for the board. That's the date where we would propose to bring you revised language and receive your direction to, oops, to file an engrossed ordinance with those changes in it.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. It's a good report. And I've been following it, of course, here on the slides as well.
It is a little strange that we'd have our first board hearing and the next day the PC would hear it. I mean...
That is unusual. It's a circumstance of trying to squeeze everything in within the land use ordinance season. The planning commission really wanted one additional meeting to deliberate. And so unfortunately, we would prefer to have their recommendation before your first hearing. In this case, we'll have it for you before the second hearing where we would ask you to direct engrossment.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. First, on the hearing, Mr. Anderson, I've heard a couple of phrases here. On one hand, we're talking clearly about a first hearing and a second hearing, but I've also heard continuing the first hearing to September 29. So which is it? Is it just one hearing that's continued, or do we have two distinctive hearings?
Well, that's a really good question, Stephen. Are you guys planning on taking testimony at that first?
Yeah, so yes, our recommendation to you on the 15th would be to continue the hearing, the public hearing, to September 29. And then on the 29th, after taking testimony, then our recommendation would be to engross, direct engrossment of the ordinance. And then that requires two additional public hearings. And it's a bit of a nuance, I guess, as to whether that means we're continuing the hearing or beginning a new set of hearings when we engross.
I don't need the clarity today. I just want to make sure that if we're going to take action before the end of October, that for our meeting on the 15th, that it's very clear. And also very clear to me in terms of running the meeting, so.
Absolutely.
Right, that will be in the board action request.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so the main question that I have is really, I'm focused on the goal of getting the clear and objective standards implemented, hopefully this ordinance season. I understand that the planning commission has heard testimony and we've certainly been receiving letters and whatnot about doing more. You've mentioned, that's been mentioned here and covered in the presentation. It will be, I appreciated that this presentation gave us a good feel for the types of coverage, topical coverage, that our community is looking for as we move forward with the next staff presentation, as well as there could be modifications to the proposed ordinance as a result of the planning commission work and so forth. I would like to have clarity on those items that are related directly to meeting the clear and objective standards versus other good policy goals. Is that achievable without too much work?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. And you basically said what I was hoping to throw in at some point, too, that really our objective, again, it's to focus on getting the work done that we need to get done this ordinance season. And we know that there are many good and very well-intentioned other things that we can and should probably look at, but we'll need to have that conversation. probably look at, but will need to have that conversation with the board as a part of our long-range planning program for the upcoming year.
Yep. And I also want to mention that in the presentation, it did a good job of mentioning that there are some aspects of this with further learning that could have some impact on the significant natural resources in the rural areas. I don't recall, as you've been going through the presentation and what I've been hearing, so what I'm about to say could be a mistake on my part. But given the sensitivity around this topic, I want to make sure that as we move forward in our subsequent staff reports and hearings, that we're all clear, as you have put in the work session topic sheet, that this is applicable to the urban unincorporated areas. That's all. It's a small, small thing. Make sure we mention that a couple of times in the presentation. That's all. Other than that, I'm following it. So that's, I think the best you can hope for.
Thank you very much.
Good work, staff. I know, Michelle, that you've been working on this for a couple, well, probably three years now. So...
Well, no question.
So good job. Let's, let's see if we can get this done this ordinance season.
Thank you.
All righty. Now, that takes care of our fifth item on the agenda. It is 11:21. We have three items on the agenda, one time certain for election drop boxes and related matters, matters at 1:00. Looking at the agenda, I don't think item six and seven can advance, given the staff we're expecting. I don't know if we could advance item eight. Does anyone know? If we have staff online?
We, we do not have Elizabeth online. I know she's up at her office. We can make a call and if you want to break for, is she?
Commissioners, would you like us to try and use the time between now and noon?
So, Madam Chair, we do have Elizabeth online if you want to proceed with number eight.
That would be good. Elizabeth Mazara Myers? Are you there? Can you hear me?
I can, yes. I'm in my office. You can walk downstairs if you'd like.
Or you can do it from there.
Okay. Can I have just a minute to pull up my presentation?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you. I'll be just a moment here.
And do we have it here for projection as well? Yes, we do.
In that case, why don't I just go ahead and use what's on the projector?
Oh, no. No, no. You take the moment. You're, you're presenting. We have the time. Commissioner Treese, so that you're following, we're on item eight, which is a briefing on the community investment conversation. This was...
Great. Thank you.
This was an update to the packet?
Okay. I appreciate it. I'm still without power here. Interesting. And it's blowing pretty hard up here.
I got a whiff of smoke earlier, but it's dissipated here.
Okay. I'm ready when you all are.
Take it away.
All right. Great. Well, good morning from my office. Elizabeth Mazara Myers here today as chief of staff to Chair Harrington. I'm just going to provide a quick overview of the community investment conversation. This is just to ground you in that as recall moment, which is what we did last year and sort of where we're headed next. You'll hear from the consultant team that's working on this later this month with more details. So this is really just that overview moment for you. Next slide. So why are we here today? To provide background and answer any board questions regarding the community investment conversation. And at the end of this, the question to you will be, is there any other information you need in order to get to be thinking about this meeting series? Next slide. So as you recall, last November, the board hosted its first ever, what we then called the budget listening tour. Pardon me. This was an effort to connect with the community to discuss the budget at a very high level. There was one meeting in each district, so four meetings. There was 12 to 20 participants per meeting. And there was a report provided to the board on December 2nd by Aaron Doyle that provided sort of really high-level thematic pieces, as well as some details about the exercises that were presented. Next slide. The first part of those meetings was a budget one-on-one with Jack Liang, our chief financial officer. Again, this was a chance for community members to get a handle around the general fund versus the, the overall budget of the county, as well as some of the ways that money can get spent at the county. And if I recall correctly, Jack also provided a, a bit of a calendar of how we walk through the budgeting process. There were three exercises that we did last year. And if you give me just a moment, I'm going to open up my notes here. The first was the exercise that we called priority spending. And this was a dot exercises that we put together. We had pre-established priorities up on sheets and we gave each community member dots. Each dot represented a million dollars. There was a green dot and a red dot. And they could put money to invest in different priority areas. But anywhere they put a green dot, which indicated spending money, they had to similarly put a red dot to indicate they were taking money out of a different fund. The areas we addressed were homelessness, reducing congestion, affordable housing, reducing crime, diversity, equity, and inclusion, decreasing tobacco use, improving natural resource preservation, library services, art investment, workforce education, access to public health service, and we gave them another option. I do not have it here, but will provide to you as part of getting you ready for this next session, that report that Aaron provided to us, which he did a really nice breakdown of sort of how folks were thinking about the investment and disinvestment in community priorities. The next exercise was a project priority. One of the concerns we had was that if we asked folks about budget priorities, that they would focus on the projects that were most in front of them. You know, the, the faulty sidewalk or someplace that needed a, a bike lane. And so we had a sheet off to the side with sticky notes. And the, the exercise was throughout the evening, we identified these projects as on-the-ground, short-term needs. And if there was something specific they had in mind, they were asked to put those sticky notes up. I went through all the different sessions and I just randomly picked a few of these to give you a reminder of what sort of things folks talked about. One of them was holding board meetings outside of Hillsborough, the idea of going out and doing meetings throughout the community. One that came up more than once was improving Washington County's website, mental health support for the formerly incarcerated, addressing senior health issues, and improving access to public health. And I think it's interesting to identify those because when, again, when we first put this up as a project exercise, the goal was to help folks from going down rabbit holes around specific projects, again, that were right in front of them. What we found pretty much across the board is folks did a very good job of identifying these larger priorities that they had, which I thought was interesting. And finally, the third exercise, as you recall, the chair was at each of these meetings, as was the district commissioner. We broke the room up into two groups and each of you took turns having conversations with, with the community members about, about the, about community investment, excuse me, about county investment. Some of the topics of conversation that came forward were accountability, expansion of the county's DEI work again, and how we will invest in furthering the DEI lens, the need for investment in parks and history around the county, and better coordination with service providers. So again, those are just examples of some of the conversations that came up through these exercises.
And if, I'd like, just like to add that one thing the, the group came away, or the groups came away from with this exercise, by virtue of the great overview that Jack gave, was that there are 77 special funds. And I think that's something that the community didn't particularly identify with, but they had a good appreciation as a result of this, of the multiple funding streams that, that are managed, which leads to part of the complexity of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. So as we look ahead to this next effort, the community investment conversations now, now renamed from budget listening tour, will be a four-part, district-centered program with a goal of providing public education on the county budget, as well as exercises that will help the community identify programs and services they want to prioritize. This is another step forward in an effort to center community need in the development of short and long-term budget planning. I think it's very important here to note that Jack and I have had many conversations over the last several months about how we manage public expectations around this conversation. The, the goal here is not for the public to provide a list of five things that they want the county to invest in and then the board goes ahead and moves those things forward. This is a higher level conversation. Again, I think it's really critical, as the chair noted, that we understand what's a special fund versus a general fund, to understand the large budget itself and then what, what, what piece the, the board actually has control over, et cetera. And I think too, one of the things we'll be focusing on this year is breaking down some of those budget areas. So for example, with public safety, that public safety doesn't always represent just sort of that law and order deputy patrol sheriff, but that there's many other pieces of public safety that get funded through that budget item. And so that will be the goal for this, this series. Next slide, please. So your role through this as a commissioner will be to engage directly with your constituents during planned exercising conversations. The consultants will be tracking exercise outcomes and taking notes and will provide a report in mid-November. Pardon me, I just have to check my notes here. Great. Next slide. The Racial Equity Collaborative, and I'm sorry, I needed to fix this slide, so let me rephrase this. The Coalition of Communities of Color is our primary facilitator for this program in partnership with folks that are members of the Racial Equity Collaborative. So that is Biennestar, Adelante Mujeres, and the Van, along with Coalition of Communities of Color, will be our facilitator group for these. These will be publicly noticed and recorded. And the board members will, are invited to attend, of course, their district meeting, welcome to join, and your all others. These are currently scheduled for the last two weeks of October. Next slide. And here are the dates. Saturday the 17th, Monday the 19th, Monday the 26th, and Wednesday the 28th. I want to note that I haven't assigned these two districts, though clearly we can negotiate or move. None of these are put in stone yet. Just in an effort to hold some time on calendars, I randomly assigned these. If district commissioners need to switch dates, obviously that's not a problem. We've also not noticed these yet publicly. And so if for some reason there's dates that are in conflict that I'm unaware of, we can, we can still make those changes. Next slide. And so that's the short presentation. Again, this is just a chance to give you all the overview, to remind you that this is upcoming on your calendar at the end of next month to answer any large questions. Marcus Monday is the consultant lead on this. He wasn't going to be available this afternoon, but obviously we moved it forward. That's not a problem. So if there's any questions you have for him, I will get them to him and will answer them by email this afternoon. He and I are planning to come back to the board probably the last week of September, first week of October, I think it's the first week of October, to give you more details about what the actual program will look like, what to expect in exercises and that sort of thing. And at this point, I'll open it up to questions.
Elizabeth, this is Pam. I have, I have a couple of questions. Obviously, you know, we've got a very different community voice right now than we did during the, during the budget hearing sessions that we held earlier. I'm anticipating that the, as I'm sure everybody is, that the comments about public safety, about quote-unquote "defunding" our, you know, the sheriff's office, those types of things will be, will hear that much more loudly than we did, if at all, previously. So are we, are we preparing for that type of discussion and in terms of making sure that the, we're aware of the, you know, the policy issues in the background at the same time?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Treese. This was one of the reasons why when we went out for an RFP, I reserved the opportunity to keep the same consultants from the community listening sessions into the community investment conversation. I think you're right that you'd be naive to think that the same kind of, the same conversation around public safety investment would not continue in something called a community investment conversation. This is the group that is currently writing the report in response to the community listening sessions, and we will be prepared for those sorts of conversations. I think some of the exercises that we will be doing though, really, the goal is to have this higher level conversation about community need writ large. And I hope that if we, if we navigate those exercises and if we use some best practices around budgeting and community engagement, that will help folks come along with us on that conversation. That said, you know, I think that we should expect and do expect folks to come with, with opinions, with strong opinions based on current climate around racial justice.
Well, and my, I guess, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm really glad we're going to be working with the same consultant group. I think it's, if we learned anything, we learned how important it is to make sure that there's good communication with the communities about what the purpose of this is, what the procedure is going to be, and not only with the community, but also with the facilitators, so that we can, we can really get to a place where we are being informed by the community as a whole. So I think that's, that's an important message for me to get across here too.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. And I will say as well that I, you know, again, I spoke to Marcus earlier this morning. We've already, one of the challenges we face is that the exercises that we did last year and the exercises we've already proposed this year may be difficult to translate to an online forum. And so we've already sorted the conversation of how we really have that kind of engagement when we need to do it remotely. And so we'll be taking that into consideration. I feel like from February 28th to today, September 8th, we've learned a lot about Zoom. And I will be working closely with IT, Kevin, and our internal team to make sure that, that we're, that the process of engaging on, from the public side is as seamless as possible.
Well, I thank you for doing this. I think it's really important and I think it needs to, it needs to look like a follow-up to all of the communication with the communities that we're having. So thank you for pushing this forward.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Treese. I thank you for, I think that was wise to maintain continuity with respect to the consultants and the people who are working to, to sort of help us put this together. So thank you. Number two, I had assumed that there would be a very large Zoom virtual component to this. Is there any thought about anything, any place that could be, for example, here, we have our work sessions. There's kind of a focal point here at the Public Service Building. Given COVID, I have doubts, but is it possible that we'll actually have a real site as well in addition to the, to the Zoom? Any thoughts about that?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Scow. And you know, throughout, wherever I write up information on this or memos, I do say, you know, in person where, if possible, I don't know if we will be in state phase two or in another phase where we're able to meet in person. I think there's such value in having face-to-face conversation. And again, so many of these exercises, part of the fun of these exercises is actually physically being in the room and walking around and having those quick conversations that are unplanned and unexpected. So if, if COVID allows us to, we certainly will be adding that component in.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, that, that mindset, recognizing that may not be possible. I, I really do miss the things you just sort of talked about. That's something that's really been missing. And, but I'm, I'm going to assume that there won't be any big changes in the next month. So...
Well, knock, knock on wood.
Yeah, yeah. You can hope for the best.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Willie?
Yeah. In contrast to our listening sessions where...
Yeah, in contrast to our listening sessions where the commissioners listened and did not respond, are we going to have the, like we did before, where we will be responding directly to these questions?
That's right. And again, you know, the hope is that at some point, if we do, for example, breakout room, that it'll be a breakout room with district commissioners, directly with constituents, facilitated, where there'll be a chance to have those more open conversations. So we'll be looking for ways to do that remotely, while still, again, managing the goals of this program, which is to talk about these larger, writ-large community investment interests.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge for us to be able to listen. I guess, I think these are great ideas. I'm a little concerned that we're going to have deja vu conversations with the same individuals as are listening. And so I'm hoping that we can broaden, I guess, that scope of topics and be able to have conversations like we did a year ago, when we were talking about budget issues and things like that. So, yeah, I'm hoping that we can have some continuity with the initial meetings of these, not necessarily a continuation of the listening sessions.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Willie. Again, I know that Jack and I met with the chair sometime recently, and had a conversation about what kinds of exercises we would be proposing and trying to think through what would translate to being online. I think you're right, though, that while we need to be aware, per Commissioner Treese's comments, of what people want to talk about, we do have goals here that are about this longer-term conversation about community investment, and we will be working towards that end. I will also note that we have a little bit more of a timeframe, an on-ramp for these community investment conversations, and so I do expect a really robust outreach process within each district, and hope that we can sort of strike that balance.
Okay. Well, I see that they're already scheduled as tentative on my calendar. Is the expectation that we, as commissioners, could attend more than just our district conversations?
Absolutely. You know, while I have only a draft run-of-show at the moment, the draft run-of-show would be that the chair would do a general welcome, and then we'd ask each district commissioner to say a few words about your district. You know, one of the goals originally of this was to give you an opportunity to talk directly to your constituents, even though it's open to the whole public. And so we do hope to provide that opportunity. And again, assuming we do those sort of breakout rooms where it's the one-on-one with community members and a commissioner, or community members and the chair, the goal there really is, again, to sort of talk about priorities that you're bringing forward and wanting to hear from your constituents about what their priorities are. So we certainly will be doing our best to let that conversation happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things from me. Hearing the discussion about physical location, while I miss the physical location as well, I want to make sure that we don't have one at the expense of the other, and that's pretty tricky to do based upon how many people you may have physically in a room or not. And so towards that end, I think we need to go with just the electronic route, so that we're not having to split our logistics team up attending the listening session. It was really interesting to see how many people it took to run those meetings with just a few breakout rooms. So I think we need to be mindful of that. And I don't have any way of gauging how many people would only have access via YouTube versus Zoom, so I know that there would be limitations there. In terms of the outreach, I want to make sure that there is outreach to each of the boards and commissions in advance, so that those members are invited to attend as well, because they're volunteering their time and expertise to advise staff and the board in terms of our work. So I want to make sure they feel invited. So really, what we're looking for here is asking each commissioner to look at your calendar and commit to some particular date for one of these being more or less designated for your district, so that we can finalize that. I also think, Elizabeth, knowing that we're going to be getting the report from the listening session on, going over that at our work session on the 22nd, I think the week prior to the very first community investment conversation, we should make sure that you've had a chance to brief each of the commissioners, so that each commissioner is comfortable with the exercise set and not having to experience it for the first time in the community investment conversation. So.
On the fly, so to speak.
Yep, exactly, exactly. And as the weeks go by and we look at, we know from the areas from last year that there are specific areas that we continue to get emails on with and without COVID, you know, mental health, homelessness. Certainly, there's a lot of intensity on elections, as well as public safety. So we may choose to prepare some information ahead of time and make that available to our public, just as an entree, sort of like a white session, a white paper, just to help them be that much more familiar with the budget documentation that is and has always been publicly available, but can be a little intimidating to navigate. So.
Well, following up on that, you had, Elizabeth, you had tentatively put District 1 for the 17th, I think it is, Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. I will just assume, unless other commissioner really wants that time, that I would take that time.
Thank you.
So have a look and touch bases with Elizabeth, and we'll get things firmed up. Great.
Great, thank you for your time today.
All righty, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the flexibility to do this this morning rather than later this afternoon. Thank you.
Happy to do it, thanks.
Thank you.
Great, so that's it for the morning session of our work sessions. We'll take a break now, and we'll reconvene at 1 o'clock and take care of the remaining two items for our work session today. Any last comments from commissioners? Does that work for you, Commissioner Treese?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck to you there. I hope your cell phone has enough power to last you through the afternoon.
I'm trying to monitor that, thank you.
Take care. All righty. See you a little later, folks. Okay.